Good evening, everyone. It is 6:06 and I'd like to call the January 22nd, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Let the record show that all members are present and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board, you have before you an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Summons.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion seconded and carried. So first up on the agenda is recognitions.
Yes, thank you. We have a special, well, several special guests. Coach Gibbs would like to come up here first, if you don't mind. Coach Gibbs is our football coach and I know he has some of his other assistant coaches here as well. If they would like to come up, they can come up too because they've worked extremely hard this year in building this program to a point to where we became district champions. We defeated Farmington 37 to 13 in our district championship. Our final record was 10 and 4. We defeated Eureka for state quarterfinals, 32 to 29. And then our state semifinalist for second year in a row, losing to eventually a class five state championship was Cardinal Ritter. And so we're really excited about that. We had five first-team CMO North all-conference selections, including the scoring champion for the conference, two first-team all-state selections, one third-team all-state selections, and three academic all-state selections. I'm going to turn it over to Coach Gibbs. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would just like to thank the players, thank the coaches for the job that they do, players, how hard they work. I'd like to thank the parents that supported us, not only just with dollars, but their time. A lot of them came in and helped cook, put together meals, and other things for us. Certainly appreciate anybody that came and watched us, whether it was hot, whether it was cold, support is always needed and I always appreciate it. So appreciate that. Also, this, the idea of us coming here and folks recognizing our kids, it's something special for them, something special for us. So we'd like to thank you all for having us here tonight. Thank you.
Coach, could you call up your team members? Because I know there's several in the audience as well. We could get a picture?
Come on, Dave. Come on, Dave. Come on. Come on. Once you guys come up, just come on up.
Yeah, bring everybody.
Yeah, have them all come up so we can get a picture. We want to get a big picture. Come on up here.
I'll have to get on the stool. I'm not going to get in on that. No, you're all right.
Ms. Towne, you going to be able to get a picture of that?
Are you back here? I can't see you.
No, I'm not even going to try to get in that picture.
I think he should put my cross to the.
They could probably pick me up over their head.
You're better, actually.
Hey, I'll put you on my shoulders.
Hey, you're like, no, Coach, no, Coach. I know it'll be hard to get this picture out. At least we wanted to get it, try to get it.
That's your line. Thank you, sir.
There we are.
Maybe I can get everybody's face in. All right, smile this way, everybody. And actually, you are in the picture, Dr. Biggs.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations this year. Thank you, coaches, for all your hard work. We know how much time you put in. Next is, please forgive me, Cassius?
Kaius.
Kaius, sorry, thank you. Kaius Lang, our CHS senior. And Colonel Gooden, if you could come up here. Cassius, class of 2024, has been offered and officially accepted a four-year, full-tuition Air Force ROTC scholarship to Mizzou. Pretty amazing. These scholarships are highly competitive and only the highest qualified candidates are selected. The opportunity doesn't only allow him to attend Mizzou tuition-free, but as long as he does well, he will have entry into an exciting career immediately upon graduation from Mizzou. This is such a tremendous opportunity and well-deserved. Can you tell us what your plans are?
Well, I plan to major in political science at Mizzou and, of course, after I'll commission as an officer in the Air Force. Still kind of deciding what my MOS will be, but I think by the time I get in, I'll figure it out.
Very good. We all had to figure it out when we got into college. You, well, Colonel Gooden, would you like to say anything else?
Kaius has been an outstanding cadet, not just a cadet, but outstanding young man. He's been with me for four years. I've seen him grow. He's outstanding leadership potential and he's going to knock the socks off the Air Force, so.
That's fantastic. Thank you for all your hard work these four years. You didn't want me with the football players.
I can't see her.
Yes, she can.
And KFBS is here to do a story with you.
Well, I might as well stay up here because we have our terrific Tigers.
El Machado Elementary, Braxton Swain, kindergarten son of Maggie Swain. Braxton is the definition of a terrific Tiger. He's respectful to teachers and peers. He works hard academically, always wanting to improve and learn all that he can. He's a caring friend and is quick to offer his coat or snack to a friend in need. Blanchard Elementary, Zoe Williams, kindergarten daughter of Crystal and Erin Williams. Every day, Zoe greets her peers and teachers with a smile that is contagious. She displays the utmost kindness and respect to everyone around her. Zoe can always be counted on to be a role model and a friend to her peers and gives her best in every task presented to her with enormous energy and enthusiasm. Clifford Elementary, Selena Lynn, 4th grade, daughter of Ji Quinn and Gong Lynn. Selena works hard on everything she does. She always models girr behavior and is a great leader at Clifford Elementary. She can always be counted on to be a good friend in and out of the classroom. Selena always has a smile on her face as she skips into school every day. Franklin Elementary, Mila Lindberg, kindergarten daughter of Allison and Charles Lindberg. Mila has always follows. Mila always follows directions in the hallway and setting a good example for other students in her class. She is such a sweet student. Mila is attentive during class time and helps others when they're struggling with work. She plays with others and is fair to others on the playground. Mila is a great example for others to see. Jefferson Elementary, Gianni Frazier, kindergarten daughter of Shabril Thomas. Gianni is a kind and caring friend to her classmates and is always willing to help out and lend a hand. She has an extreme love for education and is always ready to learn and master a new skill. Gianni enjoys reading and asks for as many books as she can get her hands on. We're so proud to have her as a student and are excited to watch her continue to learn and grow at Jefferson. Central Middle School, Emory Neely, 5th grade, daughter of Roy Neely. Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Aubrey Roth, daughter of Andrea Roth. Bree volunteers every day to clean tables in the cafeteria during her recess time. She works hard to maintain an A grade point average. She participates in sports and always gives her best. Bree is always smiling and friendly and is a bright spot at Terry W. Kitchen Junior High. Thanks for all you do, Bree. Central High School, Yan Fang, Jackie Zhang, 12th grade, son of Hui Hua Lin and Ji Kai Central Academy, Daryl Jones, 12th grade, son of Adrian Nunley. Okay, and Central Academy, Cortez Wallace, 9th grade, son of Cortez Wallace, Sr.
All right, next on the agenda is information proposals and comments from the audience. We did not have anyone who asked to speak this month, but I'm still just going to remind everyone that requests to place an item on the agenda or to address the board should be submitted in writing at least five days in advance of the regular monthly board meeting. And you can submit these requests to the Board Secretary, the infamous Brian Payne over there. Constituents who request to address the board are allotted to three minutes to speak. So, okay, next up, we have informational reports. And first is the Board President Report. That's me. I just want to report on the community engagement event that we had this past Thursday at Jefferson Elementary. The theme for the event was community engagement. We had a tour of the pre-K classrooms and the pool, the awesome new pool. And we learned, we also learned a little bit about some of the district's community partnerships. And then we had a terrific Q and A session. We all learned a lot and I'm hoping that the parents who were in attendance, parents and community members, because it was not just parents who were there, we're hoping that they learned a lot as well. Our next community engagement event is April 4th at the junior high and the theme for that one is academic achievement. Next up is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. We did have a great turnout considering the weather. I know we've been out a little bit for snow and then today for ice. Today was a little bit more difficult call for us today, but we felt that we needed to make sure that we aired on the safe side, especially with that weather coming in this morning. So sometimes it's a little bit more difficult to make those calls, but we would prefer to make a safe call than have kids get on a bus and put themselves in danger, or us putting them in danger. Again, our board community engagement event last Thursday was just fun and fantastic. We had a lot of great conversations and learned a lot about our community and some of the things, the way they would like us to engage. Thank you all for being there. We appreciate it. One of the neat things about Jefferson, and we have some of the Jefferson administrators and Tyler as well, I see you all back there, they were there as well and got to show off and showcase Jefferson Elementary. If you hadn't had a chance to go to Jefferson Elementary, it is a really neat place to visit. And a lot of that new renovations that were done is from our last bond issue. So if you have an opportunity, please take time to go out and see all the great things that are going on in Jefferson. I also want to say just a quick thank you to our families for always being supportive and flexible when we have to adjust the school schedule like today. As of today, we now have two snow days with four more built into the calendar. Coach Moyers is going to share some very special news in his report and I don't want to steal any of his thunder. He's over here. Excuse me. Please share to mark your calendar for Cape Central High School Black History Month Program at Kinder Hall. It's on February 23rd at 7:00 PM. And that's all I have.
All right, next up, we have program evaluations. And the first one is our technology program evaluation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have the report in front of you, so I won't just read through all of it. But we're progressing pretty much online with what we have had the last 10 years since we started our one-to-one program throughout the district. We did have quite a bit of turnover in the last year. We had, we have five new staff members in the last year and a half. So that, that's taking some cross-training and things in the, in the program, but overall, I feel like we are still better than, than most. And I've heard that from other districts, too. So I don't like to brag or anything, but the department, I think, is excellent. And, and we try and save money every chance we get. We reused parts from the older Chromebooks. We've pulled screens out, so we've actually saved parents' money, especially when we couldn't get screens. They had gone up to $70 apiece and we were reusing our old ones and used parts at the time. We're going about 25, so we used those instead and we actually were able to save quite a bit of money. Not only for us, but also for the parents. If you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Comment and questions? So comment is, appreciate all the hard work you and your team does, because I know with the amount of technology that we're incorporating within our day-to-day educational process, that's got to be a monumental task to keep it up and running. Question is, is there anything you need from us as a board to make your job easier or to make more efficient, to make it, I guess, reach out to more students? What can we do to help you?
I appreciate that. Thank you for that and, and great question. And so far, everything that you've done has been what we needed. And we have established some replacement schedules and those have all been put into our budget. And by approving that budget with those replacement schedules is getting us to that next step where we need to be, especially with the elementary one-to-one program, since that was brought on in stages. COVID, obviously, we had to dump as many devices out there as we could, but, so we had to reuse a lot of old devices and it took two and a half years, I believe, to get that fully up and running and now we're on a replacement cycle for it. This will be our first replacement cycle coming up. But those, those replacement schedules that we put into our budget that you approve as a board is what really keeps us going so that we have those resources and we're able to put those out there for the students, for the staff, update the servers, update the devices, so that they're not working on eight-year-old machines, which we've had in the past. We had four-year replacement cycles and the labs would get replaced, they'd go to the teacher's desk and then they would be eight years old at the teacher's desk before they would get moved out. And sometimes they would, those would get reused as, as reading devices, so they were 12-years-old by the time they came out. So you can imagine what a 12-year-old computer actually does. It doesn't do much. So yes, your support by allowing us to have that in the budget, these line items for those replacement schedules, is what we really need. And that support is invaluable for me, for the department, for the district. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Elevate to Safety and Security.
All right, good evening. So before you is our program evaluation and currently right now, we're operating under a budget plus or minus about $390,000, but that also includes grants that we've been awarded. And on a note of strength, we've accepted about over, a little bit over $500,000 in the last five years in grants that we've been awarded, whether through Department of Justice or other avenues. And so we're utilizing those to implement safety enhancements across the district. Our goal is to analyze the safety and security systems of the district and research best practices. We do that in a multitude of different ways. We have a district safety team that we utilize with representatives from all across our district. We also utilize monthly meetings that we have where we meet with outside agencies as well. Juvenile, law enforcement, probation, parole, DFS, DCS, as well as other private and parochial schools all meet here at the board office once a month and we speak about various common interests that we have to make sure that we keep everything out there on the forefront. Currently, right now, we are going through all of our site assessments to ensure our transition to our new model that we're going to be utilizing to walk through our buildings is adequate and we're about halfway through. We'll continue to keep pushing forward with that. We're currently operating in, under our existing emergency operation plans, but we are, again, in the process of updating our EOPs and we update those annually. We continue with our professional development training for all of our staff where we push into the buildings and go through all of those trainings that are important in conducting our drills, whether it be earthquake, fire, tornado, or an active intruder. We have increased building access security measures as well with controlled access and then conduct, as Mr. Hall said, conduct annual review and revisions of our cyberware security response plan because we're seeing more and more attacks on our technology front than ever before. Various strengths of the program is an abbreviated list. I'm not sure if Jamie can throw that up.
Okay.
We have that divided into various different phases. District personnel qualifications that we have and responsibilities of certain district personnel. We also have deployed systems throughout the entirety of our district and then we look at prevention as well, whether it be internal or external. What it all comes down to, and every expert would agree on this, it comes down to relationships, ensuring that we have relationships with our students, ensuring that we have relationships with our community members and relationships with our staff and that we have open communication and knowing what are their concerns and then implementing our protocols to address those concerns that they may have. With that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have academic services report and we have a PBL presentation by Jefferson Elementary Team.
Thank you for having us tonight. We just wanted to take a few of your, a few minutes to kind of share what we've been doing at Jefferson as far as stream and project-based learning. This is our sixth year since kind of making that transition and we just wanted to check in and make sure you guys kind of knew what that was all about and knew what we were doing and kind of share why, why we love it. So I'm Amber Walker. I think you all know me as a principal. This is Tyler Loffey, our PBL coach, in case you didn't know his face. Alicia Razor is our librarian and specialist. Ryan Eve back there is our assistant principal. So just to kind of give you a little snapshot of the journey that we've been through, like I said, this is our sixth year. We have partnered with CMO as far as training our teachers. We thought that was a great partnership to have local experts that we can connect with, that we can connect our students with. We also, you know, we started with PBL Works and it was a little challenging really getting off the ground with that. So we had to reflect and do some changing, go a different route. So we also got engineering design process and really deepening our understanding and our students' use of the engineering design process. We assembled a PBL leadership team because, you know, we needed support in-house. We needed experts in the building where, you know, teachers that needed support can go to those teachers right there. And that, that leadership team has been wonderful. We also started Engineering is Elementary and that's kind of a framework to really help teachers that aren't well-versed, maybe they're new to PBL, but it really does help support with those project units. These units can be in there from three to six weeks long, so really helping them structure and teach them how to teach it. We also went through a process of train the teacher. So we trained a team, our PBL leadership team, went through training up at CMO with a couple of professors so that team could then come back and train the teacher. So we have an in-house team as well. And we also just, we're building background knowledge as we need it. We know that some of our students come with some limited background knowledge or experiences, limited vocabulary. We spent a lot of time building that content knowledge as well. So in 2022, we kind of restructured a bit. That's when we bought into the Engineering is Elementary and we did the train the teacher and then we all started with, the entire building started with the same PBL. We've never done that before. Every grade level kind of focused on their own PBL, but we thought there's no better way for everybody to get as much support and collaboration than if we all just did a building-wide PBL. And we did it on bridges because what better place to do it? And so we were able to kind of, you know, bring the bridge and that's right, in our community, right into our school. And I thought that was a really good way to start it off because everybody was doing it. Everybody was talking about it. Our encore was talking about it. Teachers were collaborating. We were able to come up with so many ideas to kick off that unit. And then after that, each grade level did their own there. We also went a whole lot deeper with the four Cs. One benefit I see is the soft skills that it's teaching our students, you know, creativity, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, you know, how to work in a team, how to fail. All of those things are essential for our students and their learning.
So when we look at how we break down our integration, one of the ways we strive to do it is through our fine arts. So that includes your physical education, music, library, media, and research, and just art in general. And so what my role has been this year as PBL coach is I meet weekly. And so what my role has been this year as PBL coach is I meet weekly with our encore to see how they can be supporting our classroom teachers in that integration process. And so they really work together, create that cross-curricular concept. So to take it and really expand upon the learning that they're already doing in their classrooms with the students, they're expanding upon it in that skill in a different route. And teaching students to see things, the same idea, just through different lenses. So some examples that we have done last year are, our kindergarten always utilizes biomes. And so they really deck out the halls in what they've learned with different biomes. First grade had made dog bowls out of clay and then donated them to the humane society. Our second grade got to learn about different cultural celebrations. We took a field trip to CMO. Third grade, they worked on stop-motion claymation. So our art teacher let them model and manipulate clay to build on this claymation with their iPads, which is really cool. And then they made paper mache in fourth grade as part of their feast. So we have a few photos you can see of that collaboration in the art classroom and in the regular classrooms. And then there's a couple of videos I'm going to show you in just a moment, just to give you another lens that the impact that our students have when they're using the four Cs, as Ms. Walker talked about, in those different areas. And they're just building that schema which increases a variety of exposures. We know with multiple exposures, the more it's going to really sink in to them understanding different concepts. So if you wouldn't mind to play one of the first video.
We're actually signing a big.
What do you call it? Okay. Tell me more.
Um, first, we're, we're, we're gonna work like a team.
Mm-hmm.
And when we see black bodies, um, a box of.
Okay.
Putting it in there, cause that's our floaty.
That's your what?
Those are our floaties right there.
Oh, okay.
And I did one, two, three. Of these doors.
Okay.
Because we're actually making a big, big, big work.
Oh, wow. Is there anything else you want to tell me about your design?
Yeah. Actually wanna make it like smaller. Yeah, so much fun to me.
Okay. So yeah, that's just one example. You can see I have been this year really pushing into classrooms. This was one opportunity where I pushed into classrooms and we do novel engineering, especially at the kindergarten level, just giving them that opportunity to be creative and build and collaborate and working with other individuals on a variety of different soft skills and the building side of things. The next video is a first. Sorry?
We're gonna make.
What do you guys?
A castle and.
A castle?
Yeah, and a castle and we're gonna make like a slide. You just have to go down the slide and then you bounce into the, uh, that's the.
Oh, wow. A ball pit. Wow. Okay. So that example I love because one thing we implemented this year is school-wide design challenges. And that's the very first one we kicked off. If you're familiar with our campus, we have a new playground and the old playground, there's just a field. So our challenge for our students was design a new playground. What would you want up there? Use all of your imagination. So this was just again, giving them that creative outlook and to work with others on build whatever you want with it, especially at the first grade level. Now our fourth graders took it a step further, looked at pricing, a playground structure and equipment to really see the real-world aspects of things. And so I just love to show stuff like that as well. So we'll keep going with our presentation. All right, so Ms. Razor is gonna speak a little bit on research.
Okay, so during library, the kids bring their iPads, of course, and we have, you know, all the books. But what I do is I work with the classroom teachers, excuse me. And so like for kindergarten biomes, every biome they visit, we read books about it, we research. And then when we get to the end of that project, they pick their own animal and they do their little research paper, which you'll see in a little bit, some pictures from that. And so, and when we had fifth grade, we would do the wax museum where the kids would research revolutionary morgue heroes and then they would be that character. So, um, this is some pictures. This is kindergarten last year. And they had looked up their animals on World Book Kids online and they were sketching out the picture of what it looked like. They were writing down facts. They were listening to the articles if they could, you know, kids are kindergarten. It reads it to them so they can just listen and pick out what they want to write down. And they really love this project. This one, we have another picture from fifth grade. They also use their iPads and the green screen just to create some videos. And as you can see, John Hancock there. And we had, we had Benjamin Franklin. He was talking to some of the kiddos in the gym. And I think maybe, I'm not sure, maybe Betsy Ross. I'm not really sure on that one. But they really loved getting in character and telling the kids what they had learned. And this is in the regular classroom.
When you get Play-Doh, does it look like that?
No.
Yes.
Or is it all together?
It's all together.
All together. Try and get in there.
Mine does.
How do I get all the salt in the Play-Doh down?
You might need to start using your hands.
Okay.
Okay.
No, and no. Just you.
So the classroom features also the skills, the research skills they learn in library. They really apply them in the classroom too, so.
One other area we like to focus on beyond fine arts and research is our experiential learning opportunities that have such a big impact. So my role this year as the PBL instructional coach is to bring in those community experts, partnering with our classes to provide hands-on learning opportunities. So we might bring in a biochemical engineer. We brought in some other types of engineers. One thing with our units, because it is the engineering design process, we always are focused on one type of engineer during a unit. So for our bridges, we had this year our first graders redid the bridges this year as first graders and they got to hear of engineer from MODOT that he come and spoke with the grade at the university, which was a really great experience for them as well.
They actually worked on the bridge.
Yeah, exactly. So we got to show them some pictures of them working on the Bill Emerson Bridge, which is really great. So experts are getting brought in. We also are trying to go out into the communities as well, taking advantage of all of our different resources within our community on field trips, whether that be going to TG Missouri to tour the plant. We also went to CMO as well, had some cultural experiences. And we're gonna have some more this spring. Kindergarten is going to go to the zoo as part of their biome. So we're really excited. That was a really big endeavor that we're gonna make happen for them. So again, just giving them other opportunities to really make the learning more impactful.
And I would say we've done probably more field trips this year than ever.
Yes.
And I just want to tell you that I have never been more proud of young people and how they conducted themselves out in public. There has not been one time so far, knock on wood, this, this year that a student, I hadn't get onto him or anything. If you could have seen these first graders walking through a museum, getting all kinds of information, some of it being probably way over their head. But they, it was amazing. I mean, the, the skills that these kids are gaining is, you just can't put a price on that.
So here's just a couple other examples. We, last year when I taught fifth grade, brought in the Department of Natural Resources. So they put on an oil spill stimulation, cause that was the focus of that PBL. If you flip to the next slide, you'll see second grade really focuses on gardening and plants. So they brought in people partnering with Southside Farms is a big part of where we are in our community. So we take advantage of that, getting a chance to walk to Southside Farms. We did that in the fall and we'll do that again in the spring as well. First graders with the bridges, you can see we brought in a goat. They read about three billy goats scruff, so we had someone bring a goat. We knew who the family did. They actually let their goat walk across the bridge that the class worked on. So again, we're bringing those experiences, cause for some of our kids, they'd never seen a goat before and it was an interesting experience, to say the least. So this video, I want to explain real quickly, our third graders do the Play-Doh unit and they learn all about the chemical process behind how Play-Doh and the, you know, chemical properties. And then one thing you'll notice is the individual explaining his process. So if you want to play that for us. Tell me.
So we made Play-Doh and the. Right, we needed, um, six scoops of flour, five, we, um, we used five scoops of salt and we used four scoops of water and it turned out to be this. But it feels a little grainy when you like, um, like squeeze it.
I can kind of see it. You're right.
It's like little tiny grains you can feel and see. So, uh, next time I'm gonna use a little, um, I'm gonna, um, take down the salt a few levels. I'm gonna make it to like four or three, so that's how we made our Play-Doh.
Nice. Good job, Jason. So one thing with this, this student and the class had probably made the same Play-Doh using just three ingredients six times, right? One thing you'll notice about him, he reflected to realize even after making it six times, he could always improve it by making it a little bit better. And I love that he shared that part, if I made it again, this is what I would do. So you can continue to see the multiple repetition of things and then being exposed to that, how impactful it can be. On something as simple as making Play-Doh with salt, flour, and water. That's all it was, you know? But it's continuing to see that process and learn, the impact really is them learning that it's okay through failure. You can get better every time. So I like. Tell me.
And that, you know, in my experience, being there several years was a hurdle. Students are afraid to fail. They don't want to even try it, cause they don't want to fail. So having them have experiences where you're gonna fail, like it's not quite right, but how can we make it better? It's really helping that, that fear of failure, um, which can cripple people in, in what they do in life.
So the final aspect of PBL for us is showcase nights. We believe that it's so impactful for our students to actually showcase what they've learned through a specific unit because having that authentic audience come in and ask questions, whether it be a family member, community member, any of those partners that we have in our community coming and asking kids questions is gonna just have a really big impact on them. So this past year, we've host, now have done showcase night three years. We had two in the, in May. This past year, we had one in December, just for third and fourth. Last year, we had one for all the grade levels. And the, so each grade level again picks one unit to focus on and they showcase that with their families, whoever walks through. So you're really holding them accountable to the learning that's happening because they have that authentic audience and know, hey, in the end, I'm gonna need to showcase and know, maybe able to talk about what I learned to an adult or to a peer or to someone else in the community. So you can see, that was May's showcase night. It's great to see, the photos really speak for themselves sometimes about the students showing their family members and community members what they've learned. Last year, I organized and got four food trucks for our showcase night, which I thought was really great. That's on the next slide. And so again, it brought our community together, which we know is so valuable, especially post-COVID. Trying to bring in our community is really.
Adds fellowship to the experience.
Yes. So this next slide is from this showcase night and it's a third grader explaining his Play-Doh now to a parent.
Oh, okay. So it was like a science thing where you did several trucks. Okay.
Trial and error.
Yeah. Okay. So tell me, what happened on attempt one?
You reached.
Okay.
No, you should be able to explain it. We did it. I want you, I want you to tell them. Let's stay in here. Take them to you, okay? Cause you might be with your sister right now. Okay, I want you to wait, okay?
Yeah, wait over here. Yes, but what is, what is the test?
Blindfold.
Okay.
So again, just explaining that and then knowing that it's okay to fail through this process as we continue to persevere is a really key point. So a few things to wrap up.
Yes, so it's, you know, teachers have a lot to do. Like how do we fit it all in? So we have our traditional encore, so they're 50 minutes each. But again, our encore teachers are embedding that in with their lessons as well. And then we also have some dedicated PBL time, about three to five times a week, 30 minutes or so. And then anytime, you know, between our collaborative actions, we, we try to find any way to integrate. How can we integrate what we're already doing if we're, maybe it's a story in Super Kids or something? How can we integrate that into our PBLs as well? You gotta, you have to get creative, but it is doable. One thing that we would like to strengthen is our PBL encore instruction, even coming closer together, merging those as close to one as possible. They don't have to operate in separate silos. Just our students presenting their experiences in public product continuously more often. You know, communication sometimes can be hard for young people, you know, especially if they've had a lot of screen time in their lives. I don't know if you noticed, but sometimes communication face-to-face is, is challenging for young people. So the more we can put them in front of people and then have them explain what they're doing, they're gonna deepen those skills. And yeah, and just continue with the soft skills. I can already tell a huge difference in our students with that. And then those opportunities for them to give back to their community through service learning. We always try to embed that as well.
So does anyone have any questions for us? We appreciate you guys taking the time, supporting us in all of these experiences and opportunities. And we just like, again, wanted to get up and showcase what we have been doing and the continued success. And we appreciate your support really in that work.
And anytime we have a PBL night, please come. Um, it's one more face in front of those students, so someone could be asking them questions and interested in their learning. So you are always invited to any of those events that we have.
What's been the biggest challenge in doing project-based learning with elementary kids?
Yes, it, it, a lot of challenges. Well, one is it's a different way of teaching. So some teachers, you have to kind of shift your mindset. They may be used to a lot of teacher-led and you kind of have to step back and let it be student-led. You're the facilitator and not just giving answers, but leading them to come up with answers. So that can be a ch- challenge. It's just, you know, teaching teachers how to, you know, to do that with students. In, in the beginning, especially in fourth and third grade, one thing I noticed was if you give a challenge to a kindergartner, their imagination runs wild. You give that same, it's one of the first thing I noticed. Our very first year, I was instructional coach there. I wasn't an administrator. But when I went into a kindergarten classroom, they were so creative and they were explaining what they were creating. And then I walked down the hall, straight into a fourth grade classroom, using the same materials. It was basic. They couldn't, they, it's like they couldn't really come up with anything. And it was that moment that hit me that somewhere between, you know, this kindergarten age where imagination is, you know, running wild and, and encouraged to just tell me the right answer. Like, is this right? And, and I knew somewhere along the line, we have to be better as educators to, to keep that spark of curiosity and inquiry and imagination alive. So, you know, really fostering that. And I, I think it's completely different in just six years.
Do you ever use older, or I guess third and fourth graders to go down and talk to kindergartners and first graders and kind of mentor them or to?
Yeah, we've done some, some partnering with older and younger.
Does that work out? Does that work out pretty well or?
It does because one, you're instilling leadership skills in your third and fourth graders. They love to go down and, you know, lead something or coach a kindergartner. It, it kind of empowers them. They love it. And students learning from students, they, they love listening to each other. They love learning from each other, sometimes more than listening to the teacher, right? So yeah, I think it's, it's a huge difference.
They get a chance to be the expert.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other questions? That was fantastic.
That's great.
Thank you for your support. You know, we just ask that you continue to support us and, you know, come on over. It's pretty, pretty neat to see.
Let us know when that bouncy house is ready.
How were Lindsay? Is that in the bus?
I think I heard a slide before that, so.
Did you, did you all make it to the Thanksgiving PBL?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that was amazing.
All right, next we have Terry W. Kitchen Junior High ICU program updates.
Traumatized from doing that previously. I'm scared to touch the mic. This is gonna be more of just a quick update versus a full report. The full report will be coming later by Mr. Cook and his team from Terry W. Kitchen Junior High. I first want to highlight that I tried to do something with our font in the background. It's just in here and it didn't turn out quite the way I want it to. So it looks, it looks a little different than usual. So earlier in the year, we had the, the leadership team from the junior high come over. They went. They wanted to give you an update on their program implementation and progress related to the ICU program. Uh, that was not implemented the previous year in the fall. That rollout and full implementation went out right after Christmas break. So this marks the one-year mark, if you count full spring semester of the last academic year and then the full fall semester. Um, this is literally copied and pasted from Mr. Cook's information that he sent me. But, um, at the end of one full year, two full semesters of ICU, spring of 23 and then fall of 23, the junior high team has committed, uh, completed, he said, the following task, I would have called it goals. Um, so the end of that first semester last year with no ICU practices, they had 279 student course failures at seventh and eighth grade combined. And that was across multiple content areas. At the end of this fall semester, they had only 70 course failures. So overall, that was a 75% reduction in failing grades or Fs in different classes issued between the seventh and eighth graders. What they found, um, when they took a little deeper dive into that, and I don't know that I've actually copied that part over, but I believe the seventh graders, that only was 25 failures out of that total for them. So that is remarkable.
Wow.
Um, leading up into the spring semester. And then end of spring of 2023, with first semester of ICU was a 93.7% completion rate. And then end of this semester, when we closed out with final grades, there was 99.4% of all assignments completed across the junior high school, which I think is truly amazing.
And only 15 kids total.
Yeah, only 15 kids in the entire building with a missing assignment. So that's the, that's the short snapshot of the data after completing one full year of implementation with the team over there at the junior high school. Um, it speaks volumes to the great work that not only Garrett and Haley and Mike Connor are doing, but all the teachers across the building, how hard they're working to make sure kids are successful. Uh, he's gonna come back later, uh, in the school year, but we, we may have to push it into summertime to get a full report. But he will be giving us the full year snapshot of progress after spring semester.
The community engagement piece, they'll probably talk a little bit about that.
Yes, and we do have an upgame, upcoming community engagement event in April that will take place at the junior high. And then that will be a big part of that discussion as well. So, does anybody have any immediate questions for me after the fall semester's data was returned?
Do we have data yet on like mid-year? Are we seeing not just a decrease in failures, but also an increase in student achievement or student learning? Do we have data on that yet?
So we get our regular assessments, which we use Galileo District wide now. Um, a big piece of ICU is not only just missing assignments, it's about completion of work for mastery of the content. It's not so much the, the one time and you either pass fail, it's reteach, relearn, reteach, relearn constantly. Um, it would be interesting to take a look at the formative assessments used last year.
That's what I was asking.
Versus this year, but this year with our C-SIP alignment, that's the first time that we perfectly aligned all that.
Right.
So I don't know that.
That's why I wondered if we had the data.
The same data points here. It'll probably take getting through this first full academic cycle before we can do that.
Because I would expect that that would be greatly increased as well, which is also really impressive.
So we would hope that was what's occurring all the time.
Especially because, you know, we're not, we're not accepting failing grades. You know, if you bring me something that you just filled in the blanks and you're turning that paper in to get it off of the assignment list, it's still gonna be on there because we're not accepting that. You know, so I would imagine that that would really show a big difference.
Any other questions about the ICU programming?
Keep it up, exciting stuff.
Yeah, thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
All right, next we have the Community Teachers Association report with Tyler.
So let's see, at Alma Schrader, some staff shout-outs. First one goes to Kennedy Keys. She's a student teacher, but she shows up prepared with exciting and innovative lessons for kindergartners. She loves teaching her kiddos and will make an excellent teacher. Shout out to our reading specialists there, Bonnie LaGranne, Elizabeth Miller, and Angela Schlitt for how they have managed the new RSPs and supported the staff in the transition. Shout out to the building TAs, they are the backbone of Alma Schrader. At Blanchard, Cal Ainsworth, a truly gifted art teacher that brings out the little artist in every student and proudly displays their work all around the school. The halls look beautiful because of her. At Clipper, shout out to the reading teachers there as well, Amy Mays and Amber Wellen. The, thanking them both for their work that they have done to help with the paperwork, the goal-setting and updating the RSPs for the teachers, so we are ready to go with new reading goals for the third quarter. At the Early Childhood Center, shout out to Ms. Carolyn's Room. Ms. Carolyn is rocking her first year at ECC. Ms. Anna and Ms. China are also new this year, cheers to them. Ms. Robin continues to bring it year after year. Ms. Robin also takes on all kinds of extra duties at ECC that are so greatly appreciated. Thank you, Ms. Carolyn's Room. At the high school, shout out to Mary LaGranne, who made the CHS Christmas party so much fun with games. Thanks to Mary. At JE, shout out to Anna Sturgeon, who is so patient in handling her first year in pre-K with a first-year co-teacher and four teacher assistants like a pro. Yes, lots of individuals in one room, but they do a great job. Speaking of that room, that room has Jasmine Nova, Olivia Sanders, Destiny Ledbetter, and Kelsey Hartman. They're the TAs. They're always doing what is best for our students and being a great asset to room six, 12, and pre-K. Shout out to Chelsea Sample for a very informative presentation for TAs on PD Day. Also to Heather Fisher, she's always going above and beyond for our staff and students. She's always thinking of ways to help build and solidify our school culture. She always has a smile and positive attitude towards everyone. At the junior high, Kristi Mott is much more than an administrative assistant. She always goes above and beyond to make the environment at our school fun and exciting, especially with her homemade brats. Okay. At the middle school, Kimber, the therapy dog, has done a wonderful job in her new, or now full-time position. Ms. McDaniel for showcasing phenomenal classroom management and wonderful teaching skills. Mr. Wilson, what a wonderful addition. We are so grateful to have him at CMS. I'm so thankful for the job that Mrs. Gorman does to service our struggling readers and learn the process of the RSPs. She goes above and beyond for kids every day. So that is our shout-outs. Does anyone have any questions for CTA? All right, thanks, guys, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next we have the Treasurer Finance Report, Ms. Studek.
This report is going to be for December. I'm gonna focus on the general fund, but kind of just talk about all funds in general. So we had a beginning fund balance in the general fund of a little over $12 million. Um, revenues received in the general fund were $14 million, but total revenues received across all funds were $19 million. Um, of that $19 million, $16 million, um, is in tax revenues. So we got quite a bit of tax revenue money, um, in December, and that is received in the general fund, the debt service fund, and the capital projects fund. So all three funds, um, receive tax revenue. Expenses in the general fund were $2.5 million, and we also transferred $2.3 to our special revenue fund. So that's leaving us with the ending fund balance of $21.1 million, which is about a 78% fund balance for us right now. So we talked to fund our fund balance, it's gonna start to go really high. And then it's gonna consistently drop, um, throughout the year. But, um, the cash and investment details are listed below. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Next we have the Support Services Report.
I'll briefly give an update just on facilities. Our indoor practice facility at the high school is still on track. They started mudding and taping the sheet rock in the locker rooms, um, over our holiday break and that continues. So that part is all dried in and it's really exciting to see the shape, uh, that our future teams are gonna be able to use. Uh, we're still on track to have that facility finished near the, uh, April mark. And, uh, again, it's gonna be really exciting and we'll have some open houses and, uh, all of that as that comes around. It's just gonna be great for our, our community and our, uh, all of our interreal sports and high school sports as well. Red Star is moving along nicely. Um, again, walls are going back up in there. New windows are being put in place if you haven't driven by lately. Uh, it's really adding to the appeal. Uh, there's been a few minor changes in some of the plans, but since it's a remodel, that was all expected and under our contingency with that project. And we had hoped to have the CTC project in front of you this month, but, uh, we're gonna wait until next month to bring that to you after looking at some of the numbers that we had on some of the HVAC systems that were gonna be required for that, since it is a welding lab. Uh, it's a lot different than just putting an AC in a, in the heat pump in a regular building. You're dealing with volatile gases that could explode if not handled properly. And we wanted to make sure that the system, uh, was gonna be most cost-effective that was going in there. Because a lot of the air that is coming out of that lab actually has to be scrubbed, uh, through all the systems before it's released back out. And, uh, that'll all be coming to you next month, but it's really exciting to see how that project is shaping up. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Um, next we have the District-Wide Athletics Report.
Uh, first is the, you know, how about those Tigers? The Tiger football team that we had here earlier finishes our state semifinalist, uh, and had individual, uh, postseason honors. Those two first teamers, Keyshawn Boyd and Devarius Nunley in the state, uh, first-team All-State. Our competition cheer squad placed fifth overall in their state competition and Ms. Adeline Cook was a, uh, named All-State in tumbling. So congratulations to her. Our boys' basketball team was victorious in the championship of the Southeast Missouri in Christmas tournament against Jackson. We, it was an exciting night, there was a big crowd there, so that was, that was a lot of fun. And our junior high wrapped up their basketball and wrestling seasons prior to Christmas break. For, uh, elementary and middle schools, currently in our basketball season, uh, right now. Incidentally, the Franklin Blanchard Tigers, third and fourth grade girls' basketball team is currently 3-0. And that has, uh, nothing to do with their coach's ability. This being our second season of basketball, we wanted to show you some numbers on where we are. Uh, Jamie's gonna pull up this table, it was in your, uh, board packet. This will be all part of the program evaluation presented in August. But these are just preliminary numbers, as you can see. Last year, as you know, we didn't have first and second grade, we started with our third and fourth grade to see how the program would go. Uh, obviously those in the 22, 23 school year, zero for girls' basketball. And this year we have 46. Third and fourth was 36, and this year we have 46, and fifth and sixth grade 42, and, and up to 49. Uh, boys' basketball, again, we had, we have 82 first and second grade boys' basketball players right now. Uh, third and fourth, we had 52 last year, 78 this year, uh, which is a pretty good increase. And then fifth and sixth went from 57 to 85. A lot of that increase I just attribute to communication. Uh, one of the things that we felt like we've done a better job of is getting our, our program out there and letting the, the, the people know in our district what they, what they, what they're, uh, what they're able to get, uh, in this program. Our girls' programs, and I've started trying to dive into some of those questions with people in the community. I'd like to see that number higher. Um, you know, you know, basically we've got five teams, okay, close to it. Uh, but as you get older, you know, these fifth and sixth grade and then those kids go into junior high. Yes, I'm, I'm hopeful that those 49 young ladies that, that, uh, that are playing fifth and sixth grade will try out for our junior high team and then move on to our, uh, girls' basketball team in the high school. Uh, we, we do see those numbers dwindle as they get older, so I'm, I'm wanting those numbers to be higher as we start. Uh, so I'm trying to find that way, uh, hey, how do we get more girls involved with our, all of our athletics across the board? We had 872 students last year signed up for at least one sport. Um, currently we have 820 students this year so far in the system. I, I don't want to mislead you to think that we've already reached assist, that, that level. Uh, our system does carry over those who signed up previously. All right, so anybody who was in our system last year is in our system, and it pushes those sixth graders out into the seventh grade. Uh, however, it's still encouraging considering we still have multiple sports to take place. Uh, soccer and baseball, track and, um, and softball. How, uh, I'm hopeful we can reach 1,000 unique students in grades one through six this year that will have had the opportunity to participate in, in education-based athletics. That's our, that's kind of a, a goal, that hopefully we can get, get to that goal this year. I don't want to downplay the importance of that number. The research we've laid out in the C-SIP shows a direct correlation from athletic participation to student achievement, attendance, and acceptable behaviors. Uh, if we reach 1,000 students this year with those opportunities, we will potentially increase those positive outcomes exponentially. So we're really proud of where we're at for that, for, uh, at this point this year. Jamie Russell and I are currently working on a way to best extrapolate data on student achievement, attendance, and behavior that we can use to present in the program evaluation. Uh, I've talked to him recently about that, and we're, we're looking for the best way to pull that information. One thing I didn't have in this sheet that you guys have on your board packet that I forgot to add in here and I just got word of it late last week. Pitching for baseball and softball is a grant opportunity that we applied for to get, uh, funding for equipment. One of the, one of the challenges of our program is the amount of equipment that we can purchase. And I'm glad to report that each one of our schools is gonna get a box of baseball equipment and softball equipment. That, uh, both at all five elementaries and at the, uh, the middle school. And then talking to the, the program and trying, I mean, in navigating with, I, I, it seems like to me it's one guy that does all of the allocating of the, of the equipment. And I'm not just talking like a box, like it's a box, right? Uh, so, and you get to pick what you want, so baseballs, bats, all those things. So, uh, so we're, we're pretty excited about, uh, about that grant opportunity that was awarded to us. In the community, something we'd like to touch on is our volunteers who are coaching these teams. Yes, we do utilize some staff members that take advantage of the career ladder program, but many of our coaches are volunteers. During this basketball season alone, we have 32 volunteers coaching our teams out of the 39 coaches. Uh, that says a lot about our, their commitment to our community, their school, and our students. Many of these volunteers are parents of students on the team. But again, that increased parental involvement in the educational-based athletic setting is what we're looking to expand. Finally, some great news that we got to share from this weekend. On Saturday, our very own coach, Terry Kitchen, was inducted to the Missouri High School Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Terry's wife, Barb, and their sons Cory and Tatum were there at the luncheon on Saturday to receive the honor. I got some reports from, from coaches up there that said Tatum did an awesome job, uh, in, in the speech he gave at the award banquet. So we're, we're excited about that. Any questions?
Awesome, keep doing what you're doing.
Great.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next we have Board Reports. First is the MSBA Delegate Report.
Uh, just a big thing, they've sent out the Spring Advocacy Series calendar, so throw those on the calendar if you can attend those. Also the summer summit annual conference, that's really the big stuff they've got going on. So attend those if you can and learn what you can from them.
Um, I attended a workshop last week that I'm, sorry, I'm jumping on this, but it's connected to this. The, uh, November conference is not in November next year, it's in October. It has moved up, so, um, just like file that in the back of your heads that that is something we need to pay attention to.
And April 9th is advocacy day up at Jeff City too, so if you haven't had a chance to go to that, yell and scream and hug and kiss and everything else.
All right, next is the Legislative Report.
So the legislative session has kicked off and it has taken off exactly where it ended last year. A lot of crazy stuff's going on. Um, all of the education committees are in full swing, looking at vouchers, extending the, uh, education, um, tax credits, looking at school choice. Um, I guess after being shut down the last two years, they've decided if they throw it all together into one big plan or one big bill, that there's a better chance of them getting it passed. So you see a lot of, of bills being submitted to the committees and then they start jumping on and adding things that kind of take away from the initial bill. There's a couple right now, um, in the Senate, one is looking at expanding the voucher plan. They've increased the, I guess, the base salary for households to expand it to a lot more people. Um, and a lot of people now can take advantage of it that probably don't need to be taking advantage of it. Uh, more affluent families. I think the baseline now is almost $400,000 for a household. Pretty sure if you're making $400,000 in a household, you don't need a tax credit to send your kid to a private school. But that's my own opinion. Um, another one is looking at, um, charter schools. I know they've expanded it to St. Charles, Columbia, and St. Louis County now. And, um, so it's just curious to see how that expands outside of those areas into more rural areas. Um, I think there's still some discussion on what size communities should be allowed to, not allowed to, to have charters come into the districts. Um, there are some good things that are coming out of that in that they're putting some stipulations on, one, if the districts will accept the charters, and two, um... stipulations on, one, if the districts will accept the charters, and two, what type of support, financial support there will be of the charter schools by the district. With the voucher program, they're looking at allowing districts to set a cap on the number of outside non-resident students coming into the district. That has to do with planning for teachers and classrooms and things of that nature. I think right now they've set it at three percent, so you know, we've got four thousand students, that's a hundred and twenty students across the entire district that we could allow to come into the district if we so choose. They're also expanding it to allow for students with IEPs and other special needs to go into other districts. I think there was some talk that some districts could prevent that if they didn't have the resources or the facilities set up.
I think that's still actually in there, the district can still say that they don't have appropriate resources to serve a student. That's still, there's some allowable language in there.
We tend to need to help with enrollment.
So there's already been filibusters going on trying to get this stuff prevented from coming to the floor until they can work out some more of the details. I think they're trying to push it through as quickly as possible because they filibustered it last year and it never made it to the senate floor for a vote. And I think they're trying to do some end runs around that, but I think the first day there was eighteen hours of filibustering trying to prevent this to come to the floor out of senate committees, so there's a lot of political stuff going on right now. We just need to keep an eye on it, and if you have relationships with representatives and senators, reach out to them, let them know what your opinions are. That's all we can do to protect our school districts and keep our funding where it needs to be and not allow big education to take money out of our districts and send it to universities and outside of the state corporations that are chartered to some of these schools.
Alright, thank you. Next is the Cape Public School Foundation report, and I'm going to do that. We have a Penguin Party coming up. It is February tenth, Dr. Vegas is the band, it's going to be amazing, so make sure and get your tickets. You can go to, you can purchase tickets online if you go to the district website and then I think there's a drop down for Foundation somewhere, you can purchase, oh, is it up there on the top? Oh.
Right there.
Yeah, right there, Foundation, so you can purchase tickets directly from the website. It is always a good time, so I encourage people to come.
They have some really cool auction items this year too, so will not be disappointed.
Alright, next, we have approval of consent agenda items, and these include minutes from December eighteenth, payment of bills, the district wide network, internet service. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Second.
Alright, discussion. Do we need to talk about any of these?
Brian, unless you want to come up and talk about the district wide networking upgrades and the internet service.
Thanks for letting us put you on the spot.
Absolutely. So you'll notice in the proposals that the highlighted numbers, you already have all that. The internet service, we are currently paying one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars per month for a two gig service, so we're going to be able to go to a five gig for two thousand forty-nine, so minimal difference, plus we'll get eighty, almost eighty-five percent of that back with E-Rate funding by, with me filing that. And then the district wide internet, or the WAN, we are currently paying six thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars for one gig circuits everywhere except for the district connection and the CTC High School campus, we have five gig connections to those, and we're going to be able to go ten gig everywhere for six thousand. So it's cheaper for more service. And also by doing this, and instead of going with the ten gig internet connection, we would have had to evolve a new firewall and do backup services, and there's a lot to do that. And we feel like we're able to offset enough of the BYOD or bringing on device traffic. We have that going at a different pipe, it still gets filtered and everything, but by doing this, we're able to use our money the most cost effective.
So just ignorance here, what's the difference between those two, the district wide network and then the internet service?
Absolutely. The district wide internet is the pipe between the buildings, that's the fiber that we can communicate on, share the internet through. And the internet service is the actual ISP that gives us the information from all the other servers on the internet. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And Spectrum was, we've had really, really good service with them for the last ten years. There's no installation time, they're just going to turn it on, so.
So is this, so is our last, do we do five, five year agreements normally, or the last was ten or five?
Yes, sir. E-Rate doesn't let you go past five, you have to rebid it every five years. You can do a one year contract, but doing all this process doesn't, we don't see a return on the investment by doing it sooner. So our minimum contract is usually three due to any installation cost, and then five years, pretty standard. And that's, and E-Rate will let us go five years, but they will, we have to rebid it after that.
Sure. I just wonder because, you know, over time, you said basically you can get more service now for a cheaper price.
Absolutely.
So do you know where the sweet spot is between less time?
It's right at, yeah, you're absolutely right. And it's right at three to five years, and it depends on if there's installation costs and things like that, how those are recouped. So five years so far has been our, has been our pretty good average.
So another dumb question, follow up to Casey's. So do we have physical fiber that goes between our buildings?
Yes, sir.
That's already in the ground, and that's why you're saying they can just turn it on and go faster?
Absolutely. They're going to come in and, actually, they'll do it remotely, and they'll take the limit off of the fiber and they'll be ready to go.
That's cool.
So we won't have any downtime.
What's the normal lifetime of that fiber? Do we know?
Not really, but I've heard it said that it can be a hundred years.
Long time?
As long as it's not hit by a backhoe.
Right, right.
Which, unfortunately, we've had. But it's simply glass and it depends on the optics that they put on the ends and the frequencies that those run.
That's awesome. Thank you. I feel smarter now listening to you.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, those in favor of approving the consent agenda items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion seconded and carried. Next is business, but I don't think we have any new business. Do we have any information and proposals from board members?
I have a question.
Yes?
Do we have an update on yonder, the yonder pouches, how the launch went at the high school, and any pros, cons, learning moments that we've seen so far?
Yeah, so there's been several discussions between myself, Dr. Venian, and Michelle Ern, the head principal out at the high school. The overwhelming, or not overwhelming, the majority of the reports that have been coming in were overwhelmingly positive. They questioned students the first week back using the system, they questioned teachers. It's a feeling of being a lot more engaged in the teaching and learning environment. Conversations have picked up around the building where it's true social interaction with peers and staff members. It talks about how it's almost seemed like an overnight culture shift, so to speak, just because you can see people's eyes, you can see faces in the hallway, and there's that person to person engagement occurring. As for logistics, we were on site for the implementation and rollout in the first, well, first full week of dismissals. All car riders that come in the main entrance of the high school, they were out of the building in approximately three minutes and thirty seconds the first day, opening pouches, going out of the door. And then we shoot to have all buses loaded up and ready to roll out of the north parking lot in about six to eight minutes typically. And then on the first day, with kids just learning how to undo their pouches, we had buses rolling out of the parking lot at six minutes and thirty seconds. So that was probably one of the biggest concerns going into it is, you know, yonder plans with you, and they talk about the huge high schools they've implemented in before, but as an onsite administrator, you're always a little stressed about that first dismissal and if there's going to be some hangups or bottlenecks, and it ran smoother than we actually expected the first day.
So have we seen a decrease in disciplinary referrals since, I mean, that was one of the reasons why we were looking at implementing this program, so has that?
Yeah, I don't think we would have a relevant baseline like a year or two, just because it's such a short time span of coming back right now. You know, like you could say, well, we had so many cell phone referrals the first three weeks of school versus first three weeks of second semester, but we actually have changed the whole procedure and how that functions now, so I don't know that it would be a fair comparison. Obviously, academic achievement data at the end of the semester is going to be closely examined, but obviously, we do want some natural outcomes as the procedures have changed. You know, we want fewer disrespect situations in the classroom where the phone was the primary reason for the whole interaction taking place. We want to see a reduction in any kind of physical violence, bullying, things like that, where a lot of that was directly related to student cell phone use during the school day. As we know at the high school level, especially a lot of those things, those are, they're pre-coordinated through technology and all that, open means of communication through the day, so we're hoping to see reductions in all those categories, but academic achievement's our biggest priority.
Well, as a parent with two kids at the high school, I will tell you, there's been mixed reviews, and it's okay, I expected that. But I will say, I was very intrigued when we, I thought you and Michelle did an absolutely magnificent job at the Q and A that was held, it was kind of a rainy night at Cape Central High School in Kinder Hall. And I want to make it really clear, I guess, I don't speak behalf of the rest of the board, but I will say that the reason why I think this is a great idea to figure out how to get phones from being a distraction in the classroom, I think is somewhat obvious, which is to increase student educational achievement and make them be paying attention to the right things at the right time. I know there's different parents who've come and talked about it who maybe disagree either with that objective or disagree with the technique we're using. I'm not surprised that we see a relatively snap culture shift. One of my kids was saying he wasn't going to use the yonder pouch, he would just leave his phone in his car. And it was like, wait, for the first little bit, we're going to take our phone in, we're going to do what we're supposed to do. But at the end of the day, I think they just realized that the culture has shifted and our willingness to tolerate some of this stuff has gone away. And ultimately, we're going to set expectations and reinforce them, and hopefully this tool was good for teachers and staff to be able to do that in a streamlined and easy way, because I think that was certainly my intention, was to empower them to set a new culture there. And I think very soon, or it sounds like it's already happened in most places, we'll see that people acknowledge that and say it is a better environment and it takes the stress of having to worry about what's going on in the internet away for seven or eight hours a day. So, thank you.
And just to add, just because I want to point out simply positives, there have been pieces of feedback or concerns moving through the process, second semester. Probably the biggest pieces of feedback regarding parent concerns we've received thus far is at the high school, technology setup there for outgoing email from the student body is set up where juniors and seniors can email outside of the building to external sources. That's for post-secondary planning reasons, so it's for college scholarship applications, all the things they have to complete, among a lot of other things. But it's set up currently where freshmen and sophomores do not have those rights on their device. So if you didn't have a Cape Tigers email account and you had a freshman student at the high school, which many of you guys have had go through there, they can't just openly use their Cape Tigers email to email external individuals because there's a safety precaution that has to be taken there and part of our insurance with our technology agreements, how we filter. It goes into a lot of different elements. We're currently troubleshooting that piece to see if there's a good way to address that between the whole student body. We don't have a definite solution in place yet. We do have procedures for parents to communicate with their students throughout the school day utilizing the main office. But that's been one concern, and then, you know, obviously, some parents just very strongly feel like they should have instant access to their student throughout the entire academic day because we've kind of created that mindset, because up until now, kids had cell phones and it was very common for parents to just text their kids throughout the day and give them a message or something like that. So it's not only just changing the kids' culture around their cell phone during the school day, it's kind of just rethinking about how we have to go about communicating to not be disruptive.
And I think some of that came up at the meeting too, and again, I think some of this, I for one appreciate feedback from people to say, hey, what are the things that either we're not thinking of or ultimately need to get fixed a little bit? And as kids who participate in after school athletic activities, I think one thing is making sure the group of people who sometimes are more challenging to deal with are kids who don't yet have a vehicle. And so we're blessed that my kids are sixteen and got a car, and you were always worried about things until they were sixteen, and then you didn't worry as much because they could frequently come home when they came home because you didn't need to pick them up. But I think figuring out how do we deal with that? I'll give one other piece of feedback from my, my son will be happy I'm giving this feedback. He said that the wired headphones that they're given sometimes are challenging, and I'm sure it's because, I'm sure we bought something that was not super expensive to kind of roll out. So I have given him my wired headphones, which I think he wanted a different solution to that, but you get what you get. But I think knowing for some of the classes like foreign languages, I think figuring out how do we make sure that we have, you know, educational tools that kind of meet the intended objective? And again, he's seventeen, so take what he says with a grain of salt, but.
We did get a great deal on those headphones.
Yeah.
I totally, that was not a good answer, I'm certain we got a good value.
Brian knows how to find those deals, don't you, Brian?
And there's been other pieces of technology challenges that have arisen because of implement yonder. I mean, we had journalism classes at the high school where in the past, kids could just simply use a cell phone because of the great cameras they have on them to go record and things like that. So we've worked with technology and we're going to be supplying them with iPads for the class where they can use a different, you know, method to get all those same tasks completed. But it's definitely a learning curve for everybody, but we'll continue to progress through it and hopefully that culture shift remains that we've seen and higher levels of teaching and learning all the time.
Love it.
Yeah, I mean, my only comment, I've got, you know, a sophomore there, and within three days, she stopped talking about it. It hadn't been brought up again in the past few weeks, just kind of move on, they're kids, they'll move on, they'll be fine.
Do normalcy.
My freshman bedazzled her yonder pouch. And I was actually thrilled to see her come home with something she made and did with her hands instead of something she typed out or messed with on her phone. Like I was actually really glad that she was, you know, playing with something.
Project based learning.
Hey, that's right, that's a good point.
Any other questions about progress with yonder? It's been a really, I mean, obviously not a big timeline to examine yet, we're just three partial weeks back in, but exciting stuff moving forward. Do we have anyone opt out? So we've had, basically, the yonder implementation specialists, they tell you like day one, two, three, this is what you need to expect moving forward with your students, and then what's going to happen when you actually check out the pouches, when they have a chance to have them for twenty-four hours or like an extended time period. So we had damaged pouches come back to the high school, but we do pouch checks on those initial dates. Those students, phones are collected, pouches are collected, their fees are assessed immediately. The parents were super responsive to that, the first couple of days at the high school, most of them were actually just coming immediately to the high school and purchasing another pouch so their kids could keep participating in that. There's also a, you know, like, kids who, like Paul, you mentioned your child said, well, I just want to leave it in the car, right? So we also had the form that was a hundred percent opt out of, I will not bring a cell phone. I'd say the first two days, about half a dozen high schoolers took advantage of that route, and brought those forms back the very next day to Michelle from their parents. I'd say the majority are going the route that you're talking about where it's just, hey, we're just completely leaving our phones outside. And a common question we get to that is, well, how do you really know if they're leaving their phones outside? Well, if we don't have disruptions in the classroom, then it's still solving the problem that we were having before, and if we don't see phones out, then there's not a problem in our opinion, so. Does that answer your question you've been looking for there?
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad we got that update, thanks for asking that question. I'm glad we got that update. Thanks for asking that question. All right, we are ready to adjourn. So there being no further business to come before the board, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sum it.
Second.
Those in favor of adjournment? Those opposed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Be safe going home.